Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. Today is Wednesday, September 17th, 2025. We are going to call ourselves to order with a full call. Mr. Dial is not here because he is traveling due to work. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Evans is present.
Mr. McCollum?
Present.
Jen Luske, present. And as the community has been made aware, we do have an empty seat on our committee at the moment and are taking statements of interest for anyone who would like to fulfill that seat for the next 10 months or so until the next town election. And you may do so by emailing a statement of interest to me at my town email address, which you can find on the school's website and on the town's website. And that should be in to me by Friday if you're interested. We welcome your participation. So with that, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. We will start with our public comments. If there is anyone who has a public comment. You may let us know if you are participating virtually by raising your hand. We have no one here with us outside of the members of the committee and our administration. But if there are any hands and people interested in speaking, now would be a good time to do so. Please remember to state your full name and residential address for the record. Seeing no public comments, we'll move on to the superintendent's report from Superintendent Shannon.
All right. Well, thank you and good evening. I feel like I have a lengthy amount of report this tonight, so I apologize for that. But there's lots of news to share. So yesterday actually marked the completion of the first two weeks of school. I'm happy to share that the start continues to be a great one. Since our last meeting, we've actually had three of four open houses. The only one left to have is tomorrow night at the middle school. Each of the nights so far have been really well attended and really parents, caregivers and staff have all come away talking about what great nights they've been. And having just attended the high school last night, actually as a parent, I was just reminded how nice it is to have those nights to be able to connect with your child's teacher and to hear what's ahead for the kids for the year. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the time our teachers put into preparing for these nights. Those days are long for our educators. We know that and we appreciate their efforts to bring us into our kiddos' learning experience. I also want to highlight our partnership with the Cohasset Safe Harbor Coalition. Their work with our students is tremendous in trying to keep them safe. This weekend, a cadre of young youth ambassador leaders trained another new crop of student ambassadors. The training was held on Sunday at the Lake Keepers Inn and it was a huge success. Mr. McClellan and I and another member of the Safe Harbor Board were there to see the kids, interact with them, serve them some ice cream. Approximately 40 new members were there and were being trained and they are ready to help support the mission amongst their peers. And I just wanted to say thank you to Nicole Blashie and Emily Ludwig for being such great facilitators and mentors to our student ambassadors. Additionally, for parents, Safe Harbor is supporting a Screenager watch party among the Cohasset families. This is an opportunity for you to see the movie Screenagers: A Parent Version in your own home from September 25th to the 28th. This at-home event offers you the chance to stream one of them. It's something that our students in grades seven, eight and nine see as part of their health curriculum. They see different versions of it each year. And it's part of their wellness class. And, you know, we think it's important for parents to see what the kids are seeing. And so this is that opportunity. And if you sign up and register on the Safe Harbor webpage, they're going to give you some popcorn to have while you're enjoying the movie. And I believe there's a discount at one of the local pizza shops. So you can turn it into a true event. And that's all on both our website and the Safe Harbor website. I'd also like to remind all families that this Friday, September 19th, is a professional development early release day, is also homecoming at the high school. And that runs Friday night through the weekend. And it's supposed to be beautiful weather, so come on up, catch a game, support the students and our wider Cohasset Public Schools community. Another invitation to families is for folks to join us next Wednesday night. So instead of tuning into this, they can come to our auditorium here and join us for a community forum with parents of all ages, not the parents of all ages, will all be all ages, but students of all ages who read the book Never Enough by Jennifer Wallace. This has been our community read all summer. It is directly aligned to our strategic plan as we think about achievement culture in Cohasset and how we need to find the right balance for ourselves and our students between striving for achievement and excellence and having a healthy well-being, healthy students who can balance well-being. And so that is happening, like I said, next Wednesday, middle school, high school auditorium at 6:00 PM. And so we welcome everybody to attend. And that is truly for all parents, no matter the age of your student, because this is something that, you know, starts, the thinking starts early on in elementary school and just builds. And we see the impact of that achievement culture in our middle school students and our high school students. And they're telling us that at times it can be a lot. So this will help us strike that balance. And the other thing that we're inviting folks to is to join our committees. We mentioned last time we met that we will be creating some committees to move our strategic planning initiatives forward. And we are looking for parents and caregivers to be a part of three of those committees, the PBL Steering Committee, the AI and Tech Task Force and the Communications Committee. Information will be shared with families this week. And we're asking those interested to let us know via a Google form which of those committees they're interested in serving on and why. Ideally, we are looking for people with experience in those respective areas to join us. We know that there are a lot of community members who have expertise or particular passions for certain things. And we're hoping that if this strikes one of those for you, that you'll look to join those committees. The signups will close on September 29th and we'll let folks know if they were chosen by October 1st, because all of those committee meetings will be kicking off throughout the month of October. So we want to have a set of who's on what committee. So those are my updates. And then I have a few other things to share, but I'll pause and see if there are any questions. Sorry, move on. Anywhere, small groups of fire. Thank you. Okay. Um, so tonight I'd like to introduce you and our families to something called the Dignity Index. And you have copies of this illuminated in front of you. And I want to share this with you because it's something that we have shared with adults and some students. And I want to bring us all into this conversation. This is something that this summer, when Dr. Scollins and I were at the superintendent's conference, we were introduced to one of our keynote speakers was Dr. Timothy Schreiber. And he introduced the entire superintendent community to the Dignity Index. In his speech, he talked about how this was designed to help bring people, bring people together across difference in a way that honors the value dignity and inherent worth of every individual. I know, Mr. Evans, you weren't on the committee last year, but for those of you who were, if you recall last year, we actually talked about how our teachers were asking us, especially at the secondary level, to help build their capacity and their skill to have dialogue across difference. And to do that with themselves and with us as adults, but really with our kids as well, because that's something that we need to teach them how to do. It's important for the curriculum that we have, it's important for life. And as we continue to raise, you know, the bar for our own selves, we as adults are engaging in dialogue across difference. Some of those differences are what curriculum should we teach? Some of them are how should we handle a certain situation? We don't always have the same ideas, but how we talk to one another is really important. And when we as adults can talk to each other in a way that is respectful and expresses the dignity and value of each person, we're modeling for our students how to then do that as well. And so when we saw this, we brought it back here. We shared it with the whole administrative team and then we shared it with the department heads as well. And people really latched onto it because it is so simple and so concrete. And what the folks who designed this say is that when you're engaged in conversation, we strive to have conversation that is at a five or higher and stay away from four or lower language. And what that really means is that we come into each conversation with curiosity. We listen to learn, we withhold judgment. And even when we have to agree to disagree when we walk away, we've done so in a manner where everybody walks away and still feels like they were valued. So it was really something that people saw as useful. Our secondary folks saw that it was so useful that on the first day of school, the entire high school introduced it to all of our high school students. And they have continued to refer to it, especially in light of some things in our country that have happened. Because no matter what, we need to be able in this community to speak to each other and to disagree with one another in a way that preserves everybody's dignity. So I'm going to be, well, actually Principal Scott introduced it to the high school community in his newsletter this past week. I'm going to share it in my newsletter as well, that I wanted to present it to the school committee because we're going to have some conversations as the year goes on. Budget conversations, other conversations where we also may not always be in agreement. And I think we do a very good job actually of modeling this practice. But I think as the leaders of the district, if we are talking about it and we are using it, it's really good practice so that our teachers see us using it, our students see us using it. And it extends out into how our parents communicate. We communicate with our parents, they communicate with us. As we just think about what does it mean to be a community that is supportive of one another, where everybody's voice is invited in and where everybody's voice is valued. It doesn't mean we always agree, but it does mean that we value each person. So it's just something that I wanted to share with everybody because it's something that we are using in the district. And, you know, I think one of the things that surprised me, at least when it was introduced, was even though I think I do a good job at this, I was able to recognize times where I didn't. And it's those times where something feels really personal to me and that those are the times I have to practice this the most. And so that's what we've shared with staff and with kids as well. Is that it's easy to say we're going to do this and sometimes it's hard to practice. So just wanted to share with everybody.
Any comments or questions from the committee?
I think it goes to the heart of what we do here. Yeah. Hey, kind of, that's the six skills there, kind of like overarching
Yeah.
approach or perspective that we want the kids walking out of school with their crossing that stage and then music service. So it's kind of just here in black and white, right?
Yeah.
It is. So I mean, just good life skills to have in general, no matter what you're calling your vocation. Thanks. I think that's great. The kids are going to be thinking about that.
And there are versions for our younger students too. These are, this is for high school students, but there's a middle school kind of intermediary. And then early elementary. And so the principals really loved it. Superintendent Shannon said it grabs so quickly, like it couldn't resonate with us. And so I think it's really exciting. Yeah.
I would also, I had the same reaction you did when I saw it, that I thought to myself, oh my goodness, it's so nice to see this concretely because it's a wonderful reminder, even if it's not the way in which you communicate. If it's even the way you're thinking about an interaction with someone, it can shadow how you are responding, your facial expressions, all of those things that I think it's critical that we pay attention to when we're working with each other. So I had the same reaction to it, like, oh, I thought I was good at this, but maybe there are some things that I need to pay attention to. Yeah. And I think that that's absolutely what that's for. And we, it is an ongoing point of work for everyone, regardless of how socially skilled you feel like you are or how kind you think you are.
Yes. And their website's free, so you can go, yeah, everything's free, free, all the resources. So you can go right on to the Dignity Index and see all of their things that they have. So it's really terrific.
And thank you to the high school for being leaders in initiating this. It sounds like relatively organically for our students and for that, the high school community. That's incredible.
Yeah.
All right. I'd also like to share two MSBA updates with you tonight. One on the Osgood roof and one on the Cohasset Middle School and High School Statement of Interest. So first, the roof. That project is moving along. At the August 27th MSBA board meeting, the district schematic design and total project budget was presented and approved by the MSBA. What this means is that we now have a total estimated not to exceed cost for the roof. It is inclusive of contingencies and that that number is $5,858,522. The MSBA has awarded us a grant that will cover 32.47% of the total costs. So their estimated grant is $1,902 to $902,262. That means that the total project cost not to exceed the, for the town So all of that is still estimated cost. We don't know the real cost yet. That will be part of the next phase of this work. The current balance in the school facility stabilization fund is up just over $2.6 million. We will be moving on the November 3rd special town meeting. There's a warrant to appropriate that money for the roof project. Because of the way the stabilization fund is funded, each year we have to with, or you have to with the select board vote to put more money into that fund. And that happened yearly, so the vote for FY '27 hasn't happened yet. So when that vote happens and then when that funding is put into that account, that will then support the remainder of the almost $4 million that we will have to pay as a town for the roof. In talking with Christine here, there will be a period of time where we need to bridge what we currently have with what we will have. And so he's looking to bond that and has a plan for moving forward. So the money has been sorted out of sorts, but we still need to go through a special town meeting to make that happen and to make it official. And talking with some architects and just the MSBA in general and our OPM, the estimates are higher, but they're finding that the actual costs are coming in lower. So we're hoping that that happens. The actual roof won't start to be replaced until summer of 2026, so we have a bit of time. I am meeting with our OPM tomorrow afternoon to learn a little bit more about the next steps in the process and to figure out what the paperwork is, because they just sent us a lot of paperwork that we need to get signed. And so we'll be working to make that happen as well in anticipation of the vote. The warrant language has already been shared with the town, so that's all set. But we need to make sure that all the deadlines are met in order to move the process forward with the MSBA. So that's the roof project. And we will also be working closely with Michael Stapleton on ESY for the summer, Ted Carroll for rec. Mr. Dykes and Ms. Gibson, who run a camp every summer. Lots of things happen at Osgood, so we're going to, once we get a little bit more information, we will start working with all those folks so that we can make sure that everybody is set for summer of 2026. Regarding the middle school and high school statements of interest. So as people in the community know, we submitted our revised statements of interest this past April. Once you submit, the MSBA then reviews all the statements of interest. And from there, they engage in one of three actions. They either dismiss a project outright. If it's a project that was submitted before, they've done a senior study and they have all their permission needed, they choose to keep it in the consideration pile. Or they may say, this is a school we need to know more about. And so they come to those schools and they do a senior study. We actually just had the MSBA onsite this past Tuesday where they did a senior study of the high school and the middle school. They brought with them three members of the MSBA and two architects. And they met with myself and Sue Owen and Nick Rorati and Dr. Scollins and Principal Scott, Principal Scott Bledy, Craig, Chris Senior and Michelle Leary. And they asked questions about our statement of interest, the building, our academic programming, and they toured both buildings. On the tours, they got to see all of our systems, they got to see the facility and they got to see and talk about our learning model. And they also shared with us that this year they received 27 core project statements of interest from 21 districts. Just as an example, we actually submitted two statements of interest. So one of those is us and it's two statements of interest. And they were visiting 14 schools to do senior studies while also considering another three projects. We felt like it was a very successful visit and that we'll hear either way about their decision in advance of their December 13th board meeting to let us know if we're being invited into the project pipeline or not. If we are invited, we'll have to systematically move through their prescribed process, which will involve the feasibility period where we'll choose an order of project manager and a design firm and then engage them in a more robust feasibility study than what we've done in the past. And that new feasibility study will review what we've done and will result in the creation of a formal school building committee, multiple building options, including addition renovation, a decision about a preferred design model and a schematic designer said building option. We'll have 270 days to engage in that process once they give us their start date. And that start date could be January.
Sorry, did you say 270?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that start date could be January, or they often have like two waves or a later wave and it depends on what date they set for that second wave. But again, we don't know if we'll be invited in or not. We feel like the visit went well, that our numbers are in our favor, but ultimately it is up to them. But we do want to be ready and have done some prep work in case we do get invited into the process. So those are my MSBA updates.
And any comments from Mr. Evans?
To sit around the roof, we should be, as a committee with our messaging, ready to field questions about the cost, that the cost is significantly higher than anything we would have reasonably had expected. But I do know that the MSBA scope is larger. It's, it's more of a, more than just kind of a slapping roof on. So we should communicate that. I also think for this, we should also highlight things we have done with that fund and thank the community for the amount of money that, you know, taxpayers have given us. And we're showing that we're executing on it. So this is just going to be, you know, the first of many, so.
Thank you. Now we will move on to Dr. Scollins with teaching and learning.
So the year is moving quickly. It's been really nice walking around the schools, seeing everyone all excited to be there and really settling in now that we're in the next couple of weeks. And we are still continuing our work from our curriculum side, because that's what we do. And so we'll be pulling together our curriculum review committees for math, arts and comprehensive health. They've already done phase one. And so we're going to pull them together just to go over the action plan and any changes that we need to do for that. And then we'll be completing our social studies and ELA committees work in phase one. So there's some things that we have to finish up, so we'll be doing that this fall. So that's exciting. The assessment window is open for our students in grades one through eight. Students one through eight participate in the I-Rity Math and Reading Assessment and grades K through five participate in the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy or DIBELS, which you hear about, and also Bridges Math Assessments for those students also. And then just as a reminder, every year we screen our students in grades K through three for dyslexia or for risk of, we can't diagnose it, but we look for students that are at risk. And so this, during this time, grades one through three, we'll be looking at those students because we don't do our assessments for kindergarten until they're a little bit. So that will happen in November. But we look at our students, we look at their DIBELS scores and if they have composite score where they're in the red, which means they have, there's some tests that they are not that benchmark yet. We will then create an intervention plan for them and parents will be notified. And we'll do that again in, for the kindergarteners, that starts in November for those students. And then we do it again in the winter for one through three, grades one through three and kindergarten a little bit later. So we want to make sure that we're catching those students to make sure that we're contributing early for their success. And our interactive whiteboards are being installed this week. It was very exciting. When we ordered them, we were told it could be a really long time before you get them. And right before school started, they said they're here. So the teachers have been amazing because it's a little bit interesting to start school and then all of a sudden know that you're going to have a new large device in your classroom. So we are dividing it up between Deer Hill and Osgood. And next year we'll finish the program by implementing the remainder of those boards at Deer Hill and Osgood. And it's been really exciting. I have a couple of pictures. Can you just make me a copy?
You should already be one.
Hmm? Am I?
Yeah.
Oh, I am? Oh, okay, great. Did you do that?
Yes.
There you go. All right. Let's see. And so just a quick picture, so we had two teachers that were when they got to their classroom, so they're installing them in the evening. And then they're in their plug and plug, which is so here we can see them. So we have two of our teachers, fourth grade teacher and two fourth grade teachers, actually. And they plugged it in that morning and off they went. And so you can see the excitement on them and they're, they're easy to use and they had no issues at all starting with them. And you can see that the teacher on the right, she says she's filling in on a, on a map so the kids can see different things. And then students and the teacher were actually using the whiteboard to solve that problem. So they have great speakers, which is really helpful because some of the speakers were aging in the, in the classrooms or they were coming out of the older projectors. So overall, I think they're great success. So they'll be complete with those probably by the beginning of next week in both buildings. So being over just a little over a week. That is my update.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Mr. Evans?
If you have one, you said one more year of
We do. One more year. So I really want to thank the capital budget committee because they've really supported this program for, it'll be four years by the time it's all done. But it's been really nice to have these new boards for our teachers.
No questions. Thank you for the share.
Dr. Scollins, if you can do it off your head, can you let parents know? Lots of times as parents we hear, my child is being evaluated or tested. When can parents expect to hear any sort of news from the school about results from testing? Any sort of news from the school about results from testing, just.
The ballpark.
Ballpark.
I can actually tell you.
Okay.
Um, and so it has to happen thirty days after we finish our assessments, so. I was, I, I found myself out, I apologize.
But yeah, but typically, it's thirty, it's it's thirty days after.
So we're gonna finish up in early October, so sometimes toward the end of October, early November, you'll get a letter.
I think, I think that.
Is that good enough?
I think that suffices just so that parents can start to have an eye out and not panic if it's been a day since their child came home and said, I did I-ready.
Correct, thank you, I appreciate that.
It's it's about a month, everyone.
Thirty days, yes, yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we are moving on to section E, which is budget resource and governance, and um. Superintendent Shannon is presenting tonight on behalf of Ms. Owen, who was unable to be here.
It's, and she had an emergency that was unexpected, so I'm gonna fill in for her. Um, so we've been meeting with the budget subcommittee, we've met twice, we met this past Monday as the most recent. And one of the things that we've been talking about is finding a new format for the school budget reports. And so this is. An iterative process that we are working through, so I'd be curious also about the format of this, if this works or not. Because we've been looking at different districts and what they share and how often they share. So this is, this is our first attempt at a different, at a different format. So, school budget overview, the. School budget for this year. That was the voted appropriated amount was twenty four million eight hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and eighty nine dollars. And there was a one-time additional cost or allotment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to address some special education. So we had a total of two twenty four million two hundred and fifty one thousand eight hundred and six dollars available to us for this year. To date, we have expended two million one hundred and forty four thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars. And we've encumbered three million sixty four thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars. The reason we've encumbered more is because we are trying to encumber. Some salaries, we've encumbered purchase orders, um, and some utility costs to ensure accurate forecasting. And so one of the things that we have been really working hard to do is to be able to say to you that we are on track. For a balanced budget for F Y twenty six, and after a lot of work, we know that um. We are likely gonna be over in two line items, utilities and athletics. However, we also are really appreciative of all of the work that our principals did this summer in hiring. And given some savings that we have. Found as a result of that hiring, we know that we will be able to cover those overspent line items. So we feel really good about where we're gonna land at the end of June. Additionally, we have been awarded eight hundred and eight thousand five hundred and thirty seven dollars in grants for F Y twenty six. The breakdown Miss Owen provided to you, I think what's important to note is that. Last year, we actually did not qualify for Title One money. This year, we are back qualifying for Title One money. Part of that, I think last year we made a real push. For our families to fill out the free and reduced lunch form because that form is a misnomer. Especially in this day and age where lunch is free for all students. When families fill out the free and reduced lunch form. It tells us if there are ways that we can financially help those families, that might be. Beyond lunch, it would be field trips, it might be other fees for athletics or transportation or.
SATs.
SATs or A P exams. And so it's a really important form for folks to fill out if they think they may qualify for free and reduced lunch because. It allows us to be better able to support them and sort of wrap services around them and their kiddos. And it is also what Title One funding is based off of. And so we're grateful to the families that did fill it out because, one, we can better support them. But also it it brings more money into the district so we can continue to better support them. Um, and so we're, we're thankful that this year we've, we brought some, we've received some Title One funding.
Which also includes Title Two money, um, there's some other titles too, we didn't get any of those monies, but um, it's allowing us to. Like, do a little bit.
Attention, yeah, that we can do some, um, just gives us a little bit of help to do some things.
Um, our revolving accounts, um. They are our self-sustaining programs that generate revenue through fees to support those specific services. As of right now, our revolving fund balance is four hundred and six thousand fifty four dollars. And we are continuing to let collect fees throughout the year. We know that we went into F Y twenty six with a deficit at the end of F Y twenty five in both athletics and transportation. By September thirtieth, our transportation revolving account will be cleared, it will no longer be in the negative. Our athletics account will still be in the negative because we have only collected. One season of sports fees. But we also know that by the end of the school year, that will no longer be in the negative, and I had a conversation today with um. Beth was the new town accountant, and I apologize that I don't, I can't remember, I think it's Beth Mosley. She just started on, on the first of September, we had a conversation about that being in the negative as of September thirtieth, and so. We talked about the fact that she was gonna call the state and talk about why we are in that specific situation. And what our plan is to move out of there, and she um is hopeful that our, our plan will be sufficient. And so she'll keep us posted on that. Food service is a self-sustaining revolving account, we continue to benefit from state and federal funding that provide free lunch to all students. And that account is expected to grow as the year progresses. Utilities, um, mentioned it earlier, but based on last year's expenditures, the utility costs will likely exceed the current budget if gas and electricity. Usage remain at similar levels. That's a volatile situation because we don't know what the weather will be all winter long. A lighter winter may mean less usage, which might mean we don't spend as much. A heavier winter, the opposite, so we're hoping for, we're hoping for a lighter winter. And then I believe she also provided um just. You know, a quick overview of what has been spent of the total operating budget for this year, what's been encumbered and what is remaining. And so at this point, I would say we are on track for um. Ending the school year. Exactly where we're supposed to be with regard to the F Y twenty six budget.
Questions, questions, Mr. Evans?
I think so much of this is understanding the context of what the numbers mean, right, so. Obviously, you know, knowing we spent X, we have Y rating doesn't really tell us how we're doing. So I think the, we still have some work to do about understanding what these, like, you know, for, for instance, you referenced uh. That we can project that our salary number will come in at, at target, so. At this point, we can say, well, we've, we've spent five percent, but we also projected that we'd be at five percent now, like something of that where we could say at this moment in time. You know, we've got a lot of money utilities, but that doesn't hit yet, so we, we can at least understand where we are. Because knowing how much we have left doesn't really tell us how much time we have left with that money, so. I think that's kind of where I want us to get to is a place where we can. We have a target to say, well, we're actually, you know, we're, we're going higher than we thought, or going lower than we thought, and to try to make these really. Targeted updates where we're just comparing where we are to the baseline, right, or to, to whatever target that we're hitting. Then we know, okay, we have to step in and do something different, or you, things are going very well, and that's gonna be important to do that also when it comes to. Understanding how we spend money and that kind of ramp up is gonna be really important for long-term forecasting as well, right, because money is not spent, you know, in a big chunk, it's spent, you know, kind of in a pattern, so. That will be, I think, the next iteration of this is giving us some, a little bit of a, where this should be and where it is, um, you know, month to month, so. But I really appreciate it, we've had some great, I mean, really in-depth conversations, the amount of stuff that, that your office has put out. I think I echo, you know, we walked away from the meeting, F Y twenty six will be, you know, we're. You know, kind of gonna hit our target, I, I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot of expectation of, you know, wiggle room, but um, I think the efforts, obviously the efforts that. All the, we've put on the parents for increased fees and fee collection. We've, you know, no one likes getting a fee, but it really is important for us to have buses and drivers and get sports teams to places like. Every dollar that we collected a fee. Goes right back to your students' use of that resource. Right, I think as we're talking about a lot of different things, taxes and, and funding and all these things. Remember that. The best way to ensure that your student gets a service is through a fee which protects that service. Um, so when we have fees that are able to, again, keep our sports teams healthy, keep our transportation, you know, our bus is new and our driver's paid. Those are things that, that really help us day to day, so um, I know it all likes getting that, but that's the most important thing for us to continue to keep going is. If parents just contributing, so thank you to all the parents that do it, uh, but also understand the context of how important those things are.
Alright, I will add that we do have a public comment, and I will share that right now. Will Ashton of one twenty five Down Street. Writes, uh, regarding formatting of the budget reporting, the schools had a great system of reporting back in twenty nineteen that would be beneficial and transparent if we could reinstate. If the committee does not have copies, I can email them over as examples, um, thank you, Mister Ashton, um. For that insight, for that feedback and for the offer, and if the um central office needs the, that format, we can certainly reach out to you, I appreciate that. And I will just um. That I appreciate the sort of level of attention that we are bringing to the budget um. Across the board this year with our committee, with our administration, um, to really make sure that we are getting information to. Um, the public, that we are keeping ourselves surprised of how things are going, um, and um, just responding to um. To sort of that. Feedback from the public in general, so um, thank you to everyone who's been involved in that. Um, moving right on. We have, um, again, Superintendent Shannon to um chat with us about the disposal of surplus property. Actually, Doctor Scollins is gonna do that.
Gonna do that, fantastic, so. So we have recently moved to an updated version of our elementary math program bridges, and so. It, we needed to get rid of the old stuff and bring in the new stuff, so um, that happened over the summer, so this is a request to get rid of the old. Teacher binders, because we have new ones and some of the consumables, because they're no longer. No, we're longer useful for us, and they really have no market value because they're the outdated version, and so. Um, so here we are, and there's a picture so you can see, um, and so we're asking if you would approve the disposal of those. So that we can clear some space in the classrooms.
Thank you, so I will be looking for a motion um to dispose of the property just described um. Immediately.
So, second.
Alright, uh, motion made by Miss McCallan, secondly by Mister Evans, um, we will go for a vote, um, Mister Evans.
Craig would say.
Mister McCallan. Jen Leskey, I, please go ahead and dispose of the extra bridges or the outdated bridges.
Thank you.
Books, um, and then finally in this section, we have a substitute pay rate discussion.
Yep, that is the. So, we've been looking at. Our substitute rate of pay and substitutes in general. Because we don't have a whole bunch of substitutes. And we need more substitutes, and we need highly qualified substitutes. Because they play a critical role in our district. They spend days with our students. And each day they're with our students, they're caring for our children, and they are educating our children. And right now, our. Substitute teacher pay rate is a hundred dollars a day, which really is quite low. Um, and what I'm sharing with you is that we are very much on the low side for. Substitute pay, you'll see that while there are a few districts that are with us. When we get to school districts that are in our immediate local area, so Duxbury and Norwell are a hundred and ten, which is a little bit more. But Marshfield, Hingham, South Shore Charter, Situate and Hull. Those are the districts right now because they range in from a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and fifty dollars per day. Those are the districts that we are losing our substitutes to. We know this because they tell us. And we know this because they have more subs than we do. If you lived in Cohasset or you lived in Situate and you had a choice of where to sub. And you could make twenty five to fifty dollars more per day, that makes a big difference. And so while we are incredibly grateful for those who are subbing here, because they are amazing. They also deserve that higher rate of pay, and so we really took a look. At what this would mean for us. We looked at the total number of teacher absences for last year, and again, we have a lot of teachers, and this is over the course of a year, and. Everybody has lots of different situations, right, so this is not a comment on how many days teachers are out because we, those include some surgeries and things like that. What we're looking at are how many days. Our teacher absences are filled by subs versus not filled by subs. Because when our teachers are out and we don't have a substitute, we still need to put an adult in front of children. And that means that either a teacher. Who has a non-teaching block is in front of a different class, or our ESPs are being pulled. From the special ed service that they're here to provide to cover a teacher. And in either of those cases, we are paying a teacher or an ESP to cover those classes. And so I tried to do a little bit of analysis of what we're really talking about. And so. It's a little bit different depending on the level, because if a teacher is out at the high school. Then a sub would come in to cover three to four periods a day depending on the day. If we're looking at the high school, Deer Hill or Osgood, we need somebody to cover at least five periods a day. So I did the math of what a hundred and seventy four unfilled days at the high school equals out with regard to periods, same for the middle school, Deer Hill and Osgood. And I did that math for if a teacher covers that period, and the teacher gets paid forty dollars and sixty three cents for a period. Or an ESP covers that, and they get twelve dollars per hour over and above what their regular pay is. I highlighted in yellow because at the secondary level, often it's the teachers that are covering those classes. Versus the elementary, it's often an ESP. And so we sort of gauged it based on those two column, the two highlighted um boxes. And at our current rate of pay of a hundred dollars, if we were filled each of those days, it would cost the district forty eight thousand. Dollars. Almost forty nine thousand dollars. But really, we're paying more than that. When you combine the teachers that we're paying at the middle school and high school and with the ESPs that we're paying at the elementary school. And so we think that even with increasing our subpay. And so we think that even with increasing our sub pay. And I'd like to propose that we actually have a dual rate, which many of the districts do. In that a substitute who has never been a certified teacher would receive a hundred and ten dollars per day, but a substitute who has been a hundred, but is a certified teacher would receive a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. We think we could actually still save money this year. Um, and some additional benefits to doing this would be a consistency of experienced students, more experienced substitute teachers. And I think there's a huge component to teacher wellness for our staff. Who need those non-teaching blocks to do the things that we're asking them to do. To call parents, to do their grading, to do their planning. And in reality, unless you've been the, in the, living the life of a teacher, and sometimes it's the only, you know, time you have to use a restroom. I mean, there's a reality to that. If you have one non-teaching block per day, that is your only time to not be in front of kids. And if we need a, that teacher to cover a class, now they have no time in their day. So I think there's something about teacher wellness embedded within this. And then I would actually propose that for FY twenty-seven, we budget for this. And we actually raise that to a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a non-certified substitute. And either a hundred and forty-five or a hundred and fifty for a certified substitute rate. Um, and I would like to propose that each building has a building sub. At who is daily at that higher rate. Because they become a known entity for students. They have really strong relationships with kids. So that when they walk into a classroom, it's an automatic, okay, this is what we're doing. There's a consistency of learning for our students. They can fill true short-term needs. Sometimes we don't need, a teacher doesn't need a long-term leave. Because they're only having a short surgery. You know, I keep using this example, but a few years ago I had an appendectomy, right? You need five days off at a minimum when that happens. That doesn't qualify for a long-term sub. But you want to know when you're out for that long, that your kids are still learning. Because you know who's in there and you can have that conversation and that makes a difference. Um, and every once in a while, if they don't have a class to cover, they're also helpful. Because they can help cover a recess or a lunch or in the office. Or any number of other things where we're always shorthanded in schools. And so this is something that I would ask that you consider. Um, it is a two-year plan just because we don't have a lot of space in our budget this year. Um, but I would like to think about how we go to that higher rate and budget for it for FY twenty-seven. Because I think it's the right thing to do for students and for teachers. Any questions? It was hard, like it's all predictive because you don't. It's very hard to be firm in any of this information. We don't know how many days teachers will be out this year. We don't know if it's a teacher or an ESP who covers. We don't know if we raise the rate, if we'll get more subs, like we just, those are the unknowns. But we think that the benefits outweigh the unknowns.
I'm curious about the one twenty-five number. So I, I, so.
Yep.
I think there's like three conversations, right? One is how do we budget for this? And that's going to be a challenging one. Uh, the other one is the reality of the market, right? Which is that, um, for the immediate towns, as you pointed out, if you can make fifty percent more money driving another mile, you will do so. Uh, and so I do wonder if the one twenty-five number is different enough to give us a data point that will be meaningful. Because are we really, obviously whatever we pay more, we're going to have to pay the existing seven hundred and sixty-two fill-ins that more money. And if we don't put a big dent in that forty-nine, then we're really not getting where we need to be. So I, I kind of, I'm a little bit worried about us choosing a number which doesn't give us either thing, doesn't give us a budget savings and doesn't. So thoughts about, I mean, obviously modeling this is, as you just pointed out, very difficult. But I think if we're going to have a model that works, we have to be competitive with our neighbors. I think we have to be at the one fifty point. And then we modeled based on the savings, which you pointed out, which should be, we've got, forgot what you said, but forty thousand dollars of, of extra costs that we're paying our existing staff. Um, so if we're going to see savings there, to me, it would feel like we need to be more competitive on the, on the day rate. I also think it's frankly, just incredible that it's a hundred and fifty dollars for one to take care of a whole classroom of people. Like that's just, thank you to all the substitutes. I mean, the value we get for that and the fact that the difference in, in cost per pupil is like two bucks here for a day. But you know, and as a parent, the fact that there are days where, you know, I send my, my children to school and it's like a burn day because a substitute, because there wasn't the resource available is really frustrating. And I would gladly pay a couple of extra bucks for a really good day of education. So I see that's the third conversation, which is the value of the service is undeniable, especially at these rates. It's a bargain. Budgeting is going to be a challenge, as we said, but also I want to be sure that whatever we do gives us the outcome we want. So that's a lot there, but thoughts about going to one fifty now versus one twenty-five for this experiment or at least for the impact.
Yeah. So I would love to go right to the higher number. I worry. I, I went with a lower number for year one to be just conservative fiscally because like, while we want that many more subs, I was also worried about going too far over budget. Um, but I could do that math and come back next time and see what that really would look like. And really dig in a little bit more to see if we could make that happen. Because I think we'd get more people that way.
We could put an number on it. If it's, if, you know, one twenty-five, you know, we say, you know, it's going to reduce it by twenty percent, but one fifty reduces it by thirty percent.
Yeah.
That ten percent difference may pay for that.
Yeah.
Right? So if we can literally get a number of, well, if, you know, and then we can track that. Is this good? Is this really working or not?
Yeah.
Uh, I think that would be hugely, I mean, that would help me when it says one twenty-five or one fifty.
Yeah.
To really kind of make that decision.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that clear?
Yeah.
So. I lean towards the conservative avenue, which is what Superintendent Shannon was just saying was her initial, uh, approach. Um, because of our recent budget issues. I think that, I think that I, I agree in, in theory with what, um, Mr. Evans is suggesting, but I think it's very difficult to ascertain those percentages that you were just, you were just, uh, speculating on. I, I don't know that we're going to be able to, like, I, I don't know, we can, we can predict those with any degree of certainty until it's in practice. So why not take a more conservative approach, see if that is enough to yield the results we're looking for? And if not, then consider going higher, which I think is probably what your consideration, what, what was your thought process initially in presenting this was. Um, I, I think there's a lot of merit to what Mr. Evans is saying. I'm just expressing my, um, my preference that we remain a little bit more conservative in any, this is not just, and I, and this isn't specific to any sort of fees in particular or, or, or expenditure in particular. This is just before us. And as we're just emerging from something where I think we, I, I think we were fortunate to be able to figure out a solution there. And I think that as you just presented in the budget, uh, you know, we're, we're on the right path there to completing this year in a fiscally sound position. I feel like we need to be really careful about any expenditures. So that is, uh, and I, I know Mr. Evans doesn't disagree with that. I think that he is just speaking, um, practically from, you know, looking at these numbers that you put up here, like, and he just wants to maximize or optimize the value we're getting here. But I'm just, I, I'm just expressing my, um, I guess my apprehension about going too deep too quickly.
Do you mind if I, can I reply to that, Craig?
Because.
Sure. Uh, my, I guess my, my concern is that with one twenty-five, we do, it, it's the worst case scenario because we do neither. Right? So we pay, we have a twenty-five percent increase in the number of substitutes that we have now. But we don't lower that four sixty-eight number at all, right? Because we're actually not that more competitive. So we've spent twenty-five percent money, more money with nothing to show for it, where it actually would cost us more. So what I'm trying to say is if we go to one fifty, there's going to be a breakpoint where we're saving money. Right? Because we're not double paying, because right now it costs us more money out of the budget to grab somebody off the staff. So that's so much higher. So there's going to be a breakpoint where we're saving money on the existing staff pay. And because we're, you know, again, our, the substitutes cost less. So my concern is that the one twenty-five is the most expensive option, where it doesn't help us operational and it costs us more money. I'm with you a million percent about the, about not having the money for it. That's obviously, you know, number one concern. But that's why for the modeling, I am worried that twenty, one twenty-five is, even though it feels more conservative, in actuality, it's going to be the most expensive option. That's kind of my.
I, I think there's a lot of wisdom to what you're saying. I just don't know that we're going to be able to know one way or the other until it's in practice.
So I just did some quick math. At the four hundred and eighty-nine days, if we got us up at a hundred and fifty dollars per day for each one of those four hundred and eighty-nine days, it would be seventy-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which is still sort of, it's on, it's a two thousand dollars more than what my model here is for what we did last year. Um.
So at one fifty, it would still cost us more for everybody, even if we had a substitute all the time?
Yes.
Okay.
A couple thousand dollars.
That's the debt I want to hear. Okay. So in that point, we still.
It knows your.
Maybe nominally. I mean.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, but.
And so it's just, you know, we might not get the hundred and fifty, like that's the one, one twenty-five for non-certified and one fifty, right? Like we might get more people at the one twenty-five rate. We might get more people at one fifty. We might not get people and still have to pay. So that's what makes it hard to sort of figure out, but that's, that would be like the most expensive version of that if we had a sub every day.
If you have a sub every day, it was a few more cents. Okay. That's was the, that was the piece of thing. Okay.
Yeah. Um, and I will, we have a public comment, which I will read in just a moment. But I would also add that perhaps looking at the way in which we're budgeted against the amount that we're budgeted for this year for subs. Is also a point at which, because the, the budget is balanced at a particular, um, level right now. And whether or not playing with that, how far out of whack it gets us, um, at that time, not even just the overdone what we did last year, but then what we have planned for this year, I think is, is another thing. We do have a public comment from Da- Danielle Ziette, twelve Hillside Drive with two questions. Uh, the first being, do you know how many substitutes you currently have with teaching certificates? And the second question I'll read correctly, so we can answer them both at once for you. Um, would you consider paying a substitute without a teaching certificate at a higher rate based on their experience?
Those are both very good questions that I don't necessarily have an answer to at the moment. Um, I don't, I, it would be interesting to try and figure out how many of our substitutes have a certificate, because I don't think we currently ask. So we would have to ask. Um, and then I think the second question would be something that we would consider as a.
And this is just our first discussion on this topic. We are not taking a vote on this topic tonight. Um, so perhaps those two, uh, great questions from, um, Miss Ziette, um, can be incorporated into, um, discussion before the vote. Anything else from the committee members?
Thank you.
Okay. That closes out our, um, budget and resources, um, section, um, community relations, um, communications. So any reports for school committees, subcommittees and liaisons? Mr. McCollum?
Deer Hill PSOs meeting tomorrow morning. Um, and CPAC, our Special Education Parents Advisory Council, had their first meeting um, last Thursday at eleven, I believe. It was sort of a meet and greet. It was their first meeting of the year. And if there was a really good turnout, I heard, which is good. That, I think that group is really, um, I think been experiencing a lot of success lately and a lot of participation, which is what makes it, I think, better. The more people, the, the more spectators there are, the more support there is there. I think, uh, that makes it better. So, um, I think that's all I have for now.
Anything from you, Mr. Evans?
We already did the budget thing. That was a, a very great meeting. So.
Yep. Nothing from you today. So that will bring us to topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, of which there are none. Um, we also have no minutes to approve at this meeting. However, we do have reason to go into executive session. Um, reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions and preparation negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or to contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Um, so it will take a motion to close this public meeting, to move into executive session, and we will not be returning into a public session.
So, second.
Um, so and now we need a motion to adjourn.
We need to vote on the motion.
Oh, we'll vote on that first motion. Mr. Evans?
I.
On?
Hi.
Leskey, I. So we have voted to move to it into executive session. Now we're going, I need a motion to close this meeting, adjourn this meeting.
That does it. The motion that you just took. And then we adjourned from executive session without returning, which was the part of the motion that we just voted.
All right. So thank you for asking. Um, I appreciate it. We will see you in two weeks.